In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice for this work session, regular meeting of Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building and township website and electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session, regular meeting, would take place in the municipal building council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, August 9, 2022. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for invocation by Councilman Ram Ambersarian. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which we are one nation under.
May those assembled here today enjoy the many offerings of our township. May we abide by the rules we have established, those of trust, fellowship, and ethics, and may we place service above self in our daily endeavors. And may we always test ourselves and our efforts to be sure they are the truth, good for all concerned, of benefit to mankind, and provide peace and understanding. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Amberson?
Here.
Councilwoman Francois?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Nony Jaka?
Yeah.
Councilmember Batasnik?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Present.
Councilwoman Udine?
Here.
Councilman Vasanella?
Here.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you. We are now on to commendations and proclamations. The first, we have four of them. The first is Prostate Cancer Awareness Day proclamation by Councilwoman Francois. Is there someone here to receive it? Oh, okay. Oh, that was, that was to present somewhere else. Okay, good. Then the East Millstone First Aid Squad 75th Anniversary Proclamation by me. Come on up. Gather round. Look at you, all willing to serve. Whereas the East Millstone First Aid Squad was incorporated on June 10, 1947, and whereas the East Millstone First Aid Squad began with 21 charter members and now has 56 members, with 46 riding members, and 26 EMTs, and 16 cadets. And whereas the East Millstone First Aid Squad provides free basic life support services to the residents of Franklin Township, and whereas the East Millstone First Aid Squad has two ambulances, one located on the east side of the township and the other on the west side to facilitate faster response times, and whereas the East Millstone First Aid Squad provides free EMT training and continuing education to adult and student members, and free CPR and defibrillator training to community organizations. Now, therefore, I, Philip Kramer, the Mayor of Franklin Township, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, on behalf of the Township Council, to hereby congratulate and extend best wishes to the East Millstone First Aid Squad in celebration of their 75th anniversary. I especially want to thank them because if I'm in trouble, that's the squad that's going to be responding for me. So when they ask for a proclamation, what did I say? Come on up.
I can't believe it has been 75 years. I've been around for 30 of those, and we are still continuing. We're still serving the members of Franklin Township, and we're very pleased to do it at no charge. So, thank you all very much.
Anyone else want to say something? Most of you don't look over 55. You know, and she mentioned, so one other thing I'd like to say is volunteer if you can, and she mentioned that it's free, and that really matters. When I, I recently had to take an ambulance ride, and they didn't even ask for my, my insurance information. So I knew I was getting a bill. Now, insurance will be covering it, but it's, it's a lot of work on my part to get that to happen. None of that happens with the East Millstone First Aid Squad, so I'm really grateful for them, to them. Thank you. Councilwoman Udine, if you can come down and do the American Disability Act proclamation? 32nd anniversary. Is someone here to receive the proclamation? ADA?
Good evening. Whereas the Americans with the Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities, and whereas the Township of Franklin firms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disability as set forth for the State of New Jersey and as embodied in the ADA, the laws of the State of New Jersey and ordinance of the Township of Franklin, and whereas numerous organizations in the Township of Franklin and the State of New Jersey work with the constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA, and whereas July 26, 2022, celebrates the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with the Disabilities Act. Now, therefore, I, Shipa Udine, Councilwoman, and Philip Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, on behalf of the Township Council, to hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all who observed July 26, 2022, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Is there anyone?
Yes.
Come on down.
Not here yet. We'll continue what we're doing.
We'll have the other proclamation a bit later. All right, we are now open for public discuss, well, we are about to open for public discussion to have a motion to open to the public. Move then second. And all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now open to the public. We allow people five minutes to speak. You may only come up once. No yielding of time. Please state your name and address. I think that covers it. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Beverly Rubinowitz. I live at 67 Bayard Road in Canal Walk. I just want to talk about Randolph Road, which we have discussed here before. Just last week, at mid-morning, in the 10:15, 10:30 time, there were several 18-wheelers standing on both sides of the road with the motors running. Cars had to go into the middle of the road, like, we're driving straight with the line in order to pass through. Now, we were told last time that we should take it upon ourselves to call the police, but we're also told that someone was going to speak to Amazon. If this did take place, and it's still happening, perhaps you can use defines placed on Amazon in order to keep Randolph Road clear. It's really awful. I even tried Cotton Tail the next day to get to, and it was just filled with trucks. It's really getting ugly, and we're not even there yet. So with additional warehouses now being built and being planned on and near Schoolhouse Road, the dangerous truck congestion on our roads is going to be an even worse nightmare. The necessary drive to ShopRite or CVS is going to have to be planned when we find what's the better hour to travel there. With our aging population at Canal Walk, the horror of catastrophic accidents is already feared. We're already talking about accidents with trucks because there's so many in the area. Good planning decisions for Canal Walk, Somerset Run, the Summerfields, and the general older population have really been messed up with not great warehouse planning decisions, and I just changed that instead of saying bad. Not great warehouse planning. We hope you'll, you'll work to keep our residents safe in this traffic that is already miserable, and the diesel exhaust, the noise of pollution, et cetera. Please help keep us safe out there. And if you haven't traveled Schoolhouse Road in that 7:30 to 8:30 slot, and that 10 to quarter to 11 slot, and I don't go there supper hour, I recommend you try it. It's really getting ugly. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vidu Goyle, and I live at 37 Julie Court. On July 21, my daughter was going down Jock's Lane and Canal Road. She was supposed, it's a T-junction. It was late at night, and there was a missing guardrail, and there were lots of trees covering the stop sign, and there is no light there. So she somehow missed that there's, that she was at the end of the road, and she ended up in the canal. Luckily, my daughter had a window brake tool. She was able to break the window and get out of the car as it was sinking and swim to safety. She also called 911. Thank you, guys. I know you guys were the first responders there, and I just can't thank you guys enough. But if my daughter had not had that window brake tool, she would not have been able to get out in time, and if she had not been able to swim, she would not have made it to safety. There was nobody around there. There was absolutely no light. There was absolutely no person there that could have saved her or even known that her car was there because it quickly submerged. You couldn't even see the car. Why is that guardrail not there? I don't know if it's you guys who are there, but I really am pleading you guys to make sure that that guardrail is there between Jock's and Canal. That Jock's Lane goes straight to Canal, and that Canal, if you go straight, it's right into the canal. So I think the guardrail is missing from a prior accident. I know there might be some efforts to fix it in between that last accident, but July 21, it was still not there, and because of that, my daughter's life was put at risk. And we're just thankful that she was, had the presence of mind. It's her nightmare for the past three, four years, which is why she had that window brake tool. And thank God she had the presence of mind and the will to get out of there. But I really think that we need that guardrail.
I'm very happy that she did get out safely, and I know the answer about the guardrail, but the manager knows better than I.
The guardrail is to be replaced. We don't replace the guardrail. We have to contract that out. That guardrail, the type of guardrail that's there is dictated by the Delaware and Canal Commission, and the contractor, is the vendor that is the one who can replace it because of material shortages, was not able to get the materials to, to do the repair when we had it ordered to be repaired. I know that, that I just once again approved the, the purchase order two weeks ago for that guardrail to be replaced in full. It's, it's a, it's a, I mean, you know, it's ironic that we talk about supply chain when we have people here talking about warehouses, but the truth is, it's a supply chain issue. The guardrail that's there is dictated, the type of guardrail is dictated by the Delaware and Canal Commission, and that company that is to replace it doesn't have, didn't have the material to replace it.
So when was the last accident which took it out?
Honestly, I don't recall.
Like, how long does it take, is my question, because I see that every day, and I worry for the next person that does that by accident and is not able to get out of their car.
I don't, I don't know. I don't remember.
So, so this was discussed in our public works meeting today, this evening, so I brought that up to the Township Manager, that we have to do a better job of protecting that intersection. We are going to, our traffic department is going to look at that, study that, and maybe we can put some more eye-catching, more.
Put some lights there, maybe, because it was pitch black.
Lighting or flashing signs or something like that. So let our traffic department do their research and come up with some ideas.
And can I come into those discussions somehow? Can I be involved? Because I feel like I have a stake in it.
That is not open to public.
No. The answer is those are administrative, and they're not open to the public.
Yeah. So, but we, we, I saw that article, and I appreciated what Ms. Goyle was able to do, you know, hats off to her, even though, you know, there was a stop sign. She missed it somehow.
It's covered by trees. You should go take a look. There are trees right in front of it. You don't see it until you're right at the stop sign.
Right.
And by then, it's too late, and there's no lights.
Yeah. Thank God she was, she had the presence of mind to use the tool, because a lot of people would just freeze in a situation like that. So she was able to call 911. Our dispatch folks were able to help her through the situation, so thank God, brave daughter.
I'm glad it worked out.
But we are, we have noted that, and we have instructions to the staff to address that.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've instructed the staff to check out the trees? Yeah. Thank you. The trees.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Silverstein. I live at 11 Hardenberg Street in Canal Walk. On September 18, 2020, Governor Phil Murphy signed the New Jersey Environmental Justice Law, which requires the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to evaluate the environmental and public health aspects of certain facilities on overburdened communities when reviewing certain permit applications. New Jersey's groundbreaking environmental justice law, and I'll refer to it as EJ, the EJ Law, the rules for the new EJ Law are being promulgated by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and proximity to warehouses and distribution centers is high on the list of unequal health stressors it includes. Diesel admissions include nitric oxide, which interacts with ground-level ozone to further reduce air quality, and even with recent improvements in fuels and filters, diesel truck emissions contain particulate matter that is especially damaging when exposures are nearby, recurring, concentrated, and cumulative. The project on Schoolhouse and Metlars requires waivers from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection because there are wetlands on the property. The rules for the EJ Law are not yet fully in place. We residents are urging the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to hold an EJ hearing on this case, which would be required when the rules are in effect, and to extend the public comment period regarding the wetlands waiver application. This is the wrong development in the wrong place at the wrong time. Our local officials should be protecting the environment and addressing climate change, not building warehouses on wetlands. Franklin Township should work to control a flood of warehouse development that chokes local roads with truck traffic, worsens air quality, and locates the giant industrial buildings on previously undeveloped land. While some advocates call for a new statewide policy to curb warehouse sprawl, and some community groups have sued their own towns for permitting warehouses, many municipalities approve the projects because they boost the local tax revenue and because officials fear lawsuits from developers if permits are denied. Warehouses result in large areas of impervious surfaces that the buildings create, generating stormwater runoff, impeding the recharge of an already depleted local aquifer. Open land in New Jersey is a gold mine. There's money out there that wants to come after the whole state. I'm not saying that's evil, but it's not necessarily what the communities want. Why can't Franklin Township step up to control warehouse sprawl as Branchburg did in September 2020, when they passed an ordinance that removed warehousing from a list of permitted uses in two kinds of industrial zones? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Township Members. Again, I thank you for the opportunity of being here at your meeting and being able to speak before you. Mr. Mayor, my name is John Lopresti. I live at 22 Payne Way in the community of Canal Walk, and I would like to thank you for recognizing the East Millstone Emergency Services Department for all of their wonderful work. You probably know, Mr. Mayor, yes, you probably know that they come, they volunteer their time, they come to Canal Walk in our main ballroom, and they give us lessons on CPR and various other things. So they are unbelievably wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. I was asked, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I was asked to read a letter from one of our fellow residents of Canal Walk. His name is Jay Wald. He could not be here this evening, but I told him that I would be happy to read the letter for him to all of you, and this is how his letter goes. "My name is Jay Wald. I live at 19 Patriot's Way in Canal Walk. I have a statement to make regarding warehouses in general near senior developments. As folks get older," I hate to admit that, but I am, "as, as folks get older, their driving skills decline. Reaction time, depth perception, and a situational awareness all decline." Mayor, just ask my wife. She'll verify that. "And tractor trailers are amongst the most difficult vehicles to deal with on the road with regards to their size, turning characteristics, and stopping and starting ability. To place both of them, that is senior drivers and tractor trailers, next to each other is not only contrary to one of your jobs, which is to maintain and manage safety on our roads, but it is, simply put, unconscionable." I would just like to conclude, members of the council and Mr. Mayor, that I realize that your duties on this council are numerous. The welfare of the Franklin Township community, including its financial status, economic growth, and well-being of its residents, makes it truly an awesome job for all of you. But when you look upwards towards your Creator, do you ask, "What is my most important duty?" Do you hear the response, ladies and gentlemen? The safety and well-being of your residents. Thank you so much.
My name is Kiki Anastasikos. I live in 3204 Enclave Circle in Canal Walk, and I am a member of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. We object to the construction of the two warehouses in the corner of Metlars and Schoolhouse, and many of my, my neighbors and friends from the Citizens Action Group have already discussed many of the reasons, and we have been several times here in the past, discussing several of the environmental reasons, the traffic reasons. But since most of the people prior, before me who spoke focused on, on the traffic from the tractor trailers, I'm going to continue on that vein and focus on the impact of the diesel fuels on the health of the residents of Canal Walk, approximately 2,000 of them, 65 and above, which we all know from COVID constitutes a, at high, a risk, a group at high risk. So when I looked at the EPA website, the Environmental Protection Agency, there was an article, and I'm only going to read the first small paragraph. The article was in reference to learn about impacts of diesel exhaust and diesel emissions. And they're focusing on human health in this particular paragraph, and I'm quoting, "Exposure to diesel exhaust can lead to serious health conditions like asthma and respiratory illnesses, and can worsen existing heart and lung disease, especially in children and the elderly. These conditions can result in increased numbers of emergency room visits, hospital admissions, absences from work and school, and premature deaths." End quote. So, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the construction of the warehouse on Metlars and Schoolhouse is a public health issue. When I go to the, which I often do, when I go to the website, the Public Works Department website, and I look at the applications, there are two that stand out to me as a true disregard for the public health in the Township of Franklin. The first one is clearly the one that we're concerned about, and that is the two warehouses on Metlars, 240,000 square feet, and the, which is going to affect 2,000 seniors. And the second one is the application by Duke Realty, right next to a proposal for two warehouses at the incredible square footage of combined 2 million square feet, which I even have a very hard time envisioning what a warehouse of that size would look like, but even more so, what the diesel emissions from the trucks of these two humongous warehouses are going to do to the Elizabeth Avenue Lamentary School, which, according to my research, houses 600-plus K through grade four children from Franklin Township. Now, the reason I bring up these two warehouses is because they relate directly to what the EPA is pointing out, that the health hazard for young children and the elderly are particularly worrisome, and any responsible governing would take this into consideration. So I would like to request that you reject these two applications, because not doing so would be the equivalent of negligence towards the citizens of Franklin Township. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Toby Kramer. I live at 55 Bryan Court in Canal Walk.
Got to get a little closer to the mic, please.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Toby Kramer, I live at 55 Bryan Court in Canal Walk. I'm here tonight because this morning, something happened to me that's happened to me three or four times before in the last month and a half. I was at a red light, trying to turn left from Weston Canal onto Schoolhouse Road to go home, and a giant tractor trailer came. They had a green light, and he starts turning. There was nowhere for him to turn. He couldn't turn. He would have hit me. I had to back up the length of at least six or seven cars back to, you know, the road splits into two lanes at one point. I had to back up all the way back. Luckily, there was no one behind me, and I think I would have gotten a ticket if a policeman had seen me do it. policeman had seen me do it, but I don't know. You're shaking your head, no. Something has to be done. This is the third or fourth time I have had to back up to let a tractor trailer make that right-hand turn on school, from Schoolhouse onto Canal Walk. I don't know if they're allowed there or not. It doesn't matter, because they are there. They're there now. If you put a warehouse at, down on Mettlers, there is no way in the world that they're going to stay out of that intersection, whether you say they're allowed to or not, because that's just the way life is. This guy, I don't know if he knew where he was going or not, but I, you know, and if someone had been behind me, I don't know what would have happened or what we would have done, because he couldn't back up. So it was a disaster. So I just want you to know, this is a problem now. It's gonna, you know, yes, it's gonna be a problem in the future, but it's already a problem. Something has to be done right now with that intersection, like, right now. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Sally Zharcheck. I live at 4 Constitution Way in Canal Walk. Tonight, you really touched my heart, and I'm going to tell you why. You wanted EMS. You spoke about prostate cancer. You talk about the Americans with Disabilities Act, and for all three of those things, I want to applaud you. My career was spent in New York City as a corporate director for healthcare companies, Empire Blue Cross Blue Shield. I spent hours in meetings with doctors. I spent hours in meetings with nurses. I handled clients like the New York Yankees and the New York Mets, and all I did from one end of the day to the other was talk about healthcare. And then I had to watch two siblings die early of cancer. I have a husband, we talked about prostate cancer, who's been battling it early onset, and a son. I have four children who live in New Jersey and 11 grandchildren, all well-educated, all contributing members of this state, who reside in four separate towns from their parents. I have spent way more time at Sloan-Kettering than I wish I had, talking to oncologists about my husband and my son and their early onset prostate cancer. We had genetic testing done on them. You want to know a little bit about prostate cancer and health in New Jersey? When the geneticist found in New York at Sloan-Kettering that there was no genetic link between my 49-year-old son having early onset prostate cancer and my 55-year-old husband, when he was diagnosed, she said, and I quote, "Were they both raised in New Jersey?" And when I said, "Yes," "We love New Jersey. We moved out of state for a while, but we chose it to come back to, and we love it." And she said, "It's the cancer capital of the world." I'll give you the name of the geneticist. So if you want to know why I'm passionate on the subject of public safety and public health, of emissions, tractor trailers, my background is insurance, healthcare insurance. Yes, guys, I understand the job you have at hand, and I know it's not an easy one. Try spending some time at Sloan-Kettering, trying to understand why too many people in your family have succumbed to cancer or are battling cancer, and these emissions are not helping our well-being and our health. There must be, I served for 10 years on the Chamber of Commerce Board in the county I resided in in New York. 10 years. I worked with economic developers. I worked with people drawing business. I was a businessperson, I understand it. There's a way to recruit healthy, solid, productive business to our communities in New Jersey, and the governor is going to get the same message you're getting tonight, and I think he's starting to hear it loud and clear, that is not killing our residents. I know you can do that, and I implore you to make that your major mission. Thank you.
My name is Stan Zharcheck. I belong to her. But anyway, I want to get off the, that particular subject. I want to specifically talk about the B-9 project, which is the one on Randolph, I mean, on, on Mettlers and Schoolhouse Road. And specifically the fact that Mettlers, as you all know, is a scenic corridor. Now, I took the scenic corridor ordinance out, and I tried to review what it's gonna, what, what has to happen according to your ordinance in order to allow building on that site. By a minimum of five times, naturalized landscape is mentioned within this ordinance, minimum of five times and probably more sometimes that are missed. There is no way that I can see that any landscaping, trees, whatever, will cover a 40-foot wall by a football field long, building or wall. And they're also talking about, right in here, it says, "You have to enhance the visual characteristics of the township." I don't see any way that that will enhance the visual context. I mean, based on the ordinance on the scenic corridor alone, I think this application has to be seriously modified or refused totally. Thank you.
Janet Goldstein, 47, Saratoga Drive, Court and Canal Walk. So when we come here to speak about B-9, we're told to take it up with the planning board. And last Wednesday, we did go to take it up with the planning board. And they were extremely offended that a group of blue-shirted, mostly senior citizens would try to speak to them about a senior car, scenic corridor ordinance, which is on the books of this township. The members of the planning board are not elected by the public. They are nominated by the political parties and confirmed by the council, and they seem to feel that members of the public who come to speak to them in the public portion of the meeting can have two minutes to speak to them, and if they don't like the topic that they're discussing, they don't even have the two minutes. And this went on until the lawyer for the application that was being heard got up and told the man who was conducting the meeting that in the public portion, they need to hear the public. And then this nonsense stopped. I'd like to remind you that the, that you and your proxy, the planning board, that this is still a democracy, and you need, you act properly, but they do not. They are part of the same democracy. They are important, and they are appointed by you, and they need to hear the people, whether they talk, like the, the topic that's being discussed or not. Thank you.
Excuse me. Excuse me, ma'am, ma'am. What was the date of the meeting? I want to watch it.
It was last.
Last Wednesday, okay. Okay, last Wednesday. Thank you. Yeah.
My name is Jim Solanos, and I live at 73 15 Minute Man Lane here in Somerset within Canal Walk. And believe it or not, I'm not here to talk about the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. I believe my, my co-members of the group have stated their case very clearly regarding our position on the warehouses. We don't want them, and we hope that they're never going to materialize. I'm here to talk about something I read that this Township Council has approved. There are 20 applicants for adult marijuana in this township, all over Veronica Avenue, Cotton Tail Lane, and the applicants, according to what I read, the township is all-in in support of 20 applicants that want to manufacture, package, and sell marijuana to adults, because marijuana is now available for adult use. So I'm concerned about that. And I'd like to know what the council's thoughts were in terms of, how are you going to enforce those that violate the law? The law states that if you're under 21, you have no business buying marijuana. And I'm a teacher in the local school sub, and my son just, when I hear kids say, "Well, it's legal now." I said, "Well, it's legal for adults 21 or older. If you're not 21 or older, you have no business. Just like alcohol or tobacco. You have no business." Then I hear the response, "Oh, well, there's no penalty. All they can do is take it away from me. There's no consequence." And I tell them, "Well, there are consequences, because if the officer pulls you over, Mr. Wallock, are you going to test it?" I said, "If that officer pulls you over, and you fail the field sobriety test, because that cop thinks you can't drive safely, and you probably can't, you're going to get arrested, you're going to go to jail, you're going to wait 12 hours under Jones Law until your parents pick you up, and now you have a loss of license for six months, an arrest record, and wonderful things for your resume." So my thoughts are, what is the Township Council thinking when they're all-in in approving their 20 applicants to sell, manufacture marijuana in Franklin Township? I'd like to know what your thoughts are when you gave that all-in. Thank you.
I can't speak for the whole council. I think you, for one thing, you stated, "It's just like alcohol." The other thing is, having a manufacturer here, having a grower here in town, is not going to change the amount of marijuana available in town. Even if we don't have retail in town, people are going to be able to get the marijuana, and they're going to be able to, be able to buy it somewhere.
You mean black market?
No, it's going to be legal in the state. They'll go to the neighboring towns. They'll cross town lines, they'll drive farther and have, and drive farther if you're suggesting they're going to have marijuana, then they'll drive back with marijuana farther. I, I don't think that having it in town is going to change the amount of people breaking the law.
It's not a law issue. It's, it's a matter of consumption by youth that shouldn't be consuming, things that are going to put them at risk when they get behind the wheel.
I completely agree that they shouldn't be consuming.
Well, they shouldn't be consuming alcohol either, but we all know, and I have two sons that are now 30 and 27, and it's naive to think that alcohol isn't available through illegal channels to children under the age of 21. It is, it is the responsibility of society in general to police itself, and it's the responsibility of the Police Department to enforce the laws. It's, it's state laws that are establishing this, not municipal laws, not county laws, but state laws. The township is in compliance with those state laws. Marijuana is available through delivery services as well as in brick-and-mortar stores. It is naive to think that this won't come here in Franklin Township, because Franklin Township chose not to allow for retail establishments to sell it or commercial industrial properties for the cultivation and, and manufacture. It is, it is the law. Well, I'll close by telling you, I know, I know it's, it's a business matter, because the medical marijuana dispensaries, they generate $120,000 of cash money every day. So these recreational dispensaries, they're going to bring a lot of tax revenue into Franklin Township. I'm just fearful of the impact to the youth, because they think it's legal and they can do it, and they shouldn't. It's bad. Thank you.
My name's Nicole Velba. I reside at 19 Mayher Road. I'm also an employee at Elizabeth Avenue School. My daughter has also gone through the school system here. I'd like to speak directly about the warehouse proposed for Elizabeth Avenue. Not just the sheer size of it, which is six football fields, but also the location that it is going to be. It's not only on the side of the school, but it's on the side and to the back, which basically it will encompass their entire playground area. And this is where, you know, the children are, are at every day for recess and sometimes for gym. And I really just wish that it would be reconsidered to put this warehouse there, because, I mean, we've, people before me have spoken about all that is detrimental that happens with this warehouse being there, the emissions, not to mention the safety of the school. Now you're going to have a huge warehouse with who knows how many people working there with direct access to the school. So I really, I, I wish it would be reconsidered. Thank you.
My name's Linda Powell, 22 Buffett Drive. I'm actually very glad to hear that there are so many residents that are concerned about the environmental and health consequences of fossil fuel pollution, and I want to talk about that as well, but in a different context. I was very happy to see, and I know a lot of you have, I've seen me up here before, but not for a few years, and when we were fighting the compressor station that Williams Transco wanted to build down the road apiece. There's a, a power plant that they, a different company wants to build in Keatsburg Woodbridge Center, which is actually closer to me and closer to the most populated section of town than that site of that compressor station, which is not yet to be built. There's also another compressor station by the same company up in Branchburg, which some of you may know had an explosion several years back where 13 people were injured. This is not a very responsible company. And besides some of the diesel fuel, one of the major pollutants are the fossil fuel companies, the power plants, and the compressor stations. And in terms of the health risks associated with, with these types of structures, which basically are not needed for energy in New Jersey at all, include, but are not limited to many types of cancer, cardiovascular disease, kidney failure, asthma, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, central nervous system dysfunction, birth defects, poor birth outcomes, as well as premature death. Benzene in particular causes childhood leukemia and likely other hematological cancers, and the medical literature suggests that there are no safe levels of exposure to benzene. Other studies show association with neurodevelopmental disorders, including autism and neurodegenerative disorders such as Parkinson's, ALS, and Alzheimer's. These types of, of power plants and compressor stations are usually running 24/7, and they're only for the profits of the fossil fuel companies, and they're not for energy that we need here in New Jersey or in New York or the surrounding area. There is, on the agenda tonight, there is a resolution against the, the power plant in Keatsburg section of Woodbridge, and I hope you will pass it. The Environmental Commission here in town already passed it. And there's also a rally Thursday night at the Raritan Valley Community College, 118 Lamington Road in Branchburg, in Conference, Grand Conference Room A and B. It's an NJDEP hearing, which starts at 6:00 on the air permit for this other compressor station, and I fear if this compressor station goes through and gets permitted, the next one is going to, they're going to want to reopen the idea of, of 206 down the road apiece. So it, we're having a rally at 5:00 PM, so if people can get out to Raritan Valley. And there's also going to be a rally on August 17th in front of Town Hall in Woodbridge at 6:30 protesting the Keatsburg power plant, and I hope people can come out to that as well. And that's, and all, the other thing was the community energy aggregation ordinance, and I feel that at least in some little way, if we can work together as a town, and the township can, can buy clean energy, at least in part for the community, it's a way for me and other people who can't afford their, our own solar panels, to get cleaner energy and move towards a cleaner future, because if we don't do that with the climate change in New Jersey, which is the fastest-warming state in the United States, and we all know from floods and... warming state in the United States, and we all know from floods and, and fires and other disasters that climate change is only getting worse unless we turn away from fossil fuels. So I hope we can move forward with the energy aggregation and get more clean energy for our residents. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Charlie Cradaville, I'm the Central Jersey Organizer with Food and Water Watch. Our New Jersey office is at 100 Bayard Street in downtown New Brunswick, and I did want to echo the sentiments and thank the council and mayor for Agenda Item S under resolutions, the resolution opposing the construction of the CPV Keesby Power Plant. For those who may not be aware, despite all we know about the impacts of air pollution on human health and the impacts of greenhouse gases on the earth's climate, there are still plans afoot for expanding fossil fuel infrastructure right here in central Jersey. Linda just told you about a DEP hearing that's taken place this week regarding a compressor station in this county. But there's also this very disturbing and concerning plan to build a 630-megawatt gas-fired power plant in the Keesby section of Woodbridge. And it's actually a private company called CPV that wants to build this plant next to their existing 725-megawatt gas plant. And they currently have an air pollution permit application pending before the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And in that application, they say they're seeking approval to emit up to 2.37 million additional tons of greenhouse gases, making that facility one of the largest climate polluters in the entire state of New Jersey. Now, today was just the latest oppressively hot summer day. Days like this often come with poor air quality as ground level ozone forms and makes it harder for vulnerable populations to breathe. And we will have more days like this if we continue to build more fossil fuel power stations like the proposal that's on the table right now. And for the record, this would be less than eight miles outside of Franklin Township. Of course, climate change affects us all, and climate change does bring with it more frequent and extreme storms, devastating droughts and floods. And those lead to losses of life, damage to property, and lots of unnecessary costs to local and county governments. I also want to emphasize it's not just the greenhouse gases we should be concerned about straight from the pending application. I'll read to you the, you know, proposed emissions. They're asking for permission to pollute an additional 148 tons of nitrogen oxides, 125 tons of ammonia, 123 tons of particulate matter, 110 tons of carbon monoxide, 77 tons of total suspended particles, 49.9 tons of volatile organic compounds, 39.9 tons of sulfur dioxide, and 25.1 tons of sulfuric acid mist. And that is just some of the compounds and chemicals that they want permission to put into the air each and every year. And I will note, you know, like I said, we're about eight miles outside of this site. The vast majority of the particulate matter that would be emitted is PM 2.5, the more finer particulates that are smaller. And according to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, those particles can travel hundreds of miles. So they will be breathed in by human beings in this state and other states, but the closer you are, the more you're going to get. And I'll note for the record, we already have six operational fossil fuel power stations in Middlesex County. This would make seven. And the really concerning thing about particulate matter, that 2.5 particulate matter, is it embeds itself deep inside human lungs and stays with you for the rest of your life. So we definitely don't need any more of it. I know we already heard about particulate matter and carcinogens and, and how we are unfortunately one of the states that's most deeply affected by cancers. And taking this step tonight will make Franklin Township the fifth municipality to stand against this very bad proposal to pollute our air and make climate change even worse. So I just wanted to thank you for putting it on your agenda, encourage you to vote yes for it tonight. And I also wanted to thank the residents who've been instrumental in advancing this resolution and also express my deep gratitude to the Environmental Commission for recommending this and spending so much time evaluating this issue and making such a strong recommendation. So I encourage you to vote yes on this. Thank you all.
Many years ago, 146 Emerson Road Somerset. I came here to congratulate the township, the council particularly, for taking too serious action or planning to take too serious action for environment. One, opposing Keesby, which is in Woodbridge and is going, and it was talked about, I'm not going to elaborate on that, but is, is going to make the second power plant, gas frac power plant there. And none of it, none of what it produces is used in New Jersey. None of it. Even at this point, what it produces right now with the first power plant is more than they need is being used in New Jersey. So thank you for going to support it and being the fifth township, town that is supporting this and putting pressure on the EPA and DEP and the governor to reject this. That's one congratulation. And we have to be, you know, I know you are going to vote for it, and there have been a lot of support for that. Also for energy aggregation. And I am very happy that you are doing this, and I'm hoping that we are going to, you are going to pass a very serious resolution. You have offered an alternative to what was proposed, and I hope that this resolution that you are going to have ordinance that you are going to pass is what it makes the other one much even better than that one. So, so I have been, I have come here many times, and I said, I'm so proud of and happy to be in, in, in the township. But, and I have talked about also about the environment before. I, if you do, the last time I was here, I talked about, and the trucks, how many trucks are on this, on, on the road on Eastern Avenue at all hours and how traffic is high, much, much higher than before. And the problem for the environment for that. But I was really disappointed. It was very heartbreaking for me for the three items that it came up. One, the guardrail. I don't care how long it was. I think maybe you can put some, you know, some containers with stone in it so people see it and color it. I cannot believe this. This is unacceptable. This is unacceptable. My, my heartbreak broke for you and your daughter particularly. I'm so, I'm so sorry. Thank you for coming and talking about this. We should get together more often. We should have community. In this community, we have to have gatherings at least once a month or every other month to see what's going on. Many people, including myself, I don't get a chance, I really don't get a chance to read everything that is coming out.
Ms. Sabah, you have to address the council.
I'm sorry. I am, I'm organizing at the same time, sorry. I didn't mean to do that. But you got me there. And also, you are doing two things. You are doing two different things, three different things at the same time. You're expanding all of these warehouses. At the same time, you're fighting, you're going to do things on environment. Do you really believe in it? Do you understand what's going on? We had a more compressor. It was four years for stopping one compressor. Now you are going to have another one? The same, the same disgusting abusive company is coming from another door and trying to get in? It should be rejected to begin start with. And, you know, please, this place is much, you are all much better people than what is going on. Please, stand up. And whatever you can do there, get us, let us know what's going on, and we take care of them. Thank you. In civil resistance, you're really, you are getting us to engage in civil resistance. And you know, I, I, I believe in that. I took pledge to that years ago, pledge of nonviolence resistance. We are going to resist them in every which way we can. We cannot have two environmental projects, very, very strong, very powerful, at the same time, from the other hand, you are doing what you are doing. Thank you very much.
Lawrence Rivera, 29 Saratoga Court in Canal Walk. I have three questions to pose to this panel. The first is, when is enough enough? We have, we have warehouses from Exit 12, coming down River Road, all the way down through Cotton Tail Road to Schoolhouse Road and beyond. They're not, some of these are monstrosities, 40-foot high, they're ugly, and they don't serve that much purpose to the community. My, my second question that I want to pose is, what percentage of the taxes that we get from, from these warehouses go to offset the damage that is done health-wise, destroying the beautiful area that was once farmland, lovely resident residential areas for homes? And, well, I think that's probably enough for you to deal with. My third one, I don't think you're ever going to have an answer to. What happens to these warehouses when they become derelict? They have no, no longer served any economic purpose, and they become abandoned like box stores on Eastern Avenue. They just sit there until they, they either get torn down and, and find new life. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Bear with me because I've changed just about everything that I was going to address. One of those mornings where I woke up and I wasn't sure if I needed coffee, water, or a cookie. And then I thought, hell, maybe I should just get the hell out of Franklin Township.
Name and address, please.
I'm getting to it, Mayor. Shirley Tallman, 57, Tallman Lane, and I've been here before. The first thing that I, I don't want to let go is Mr. Warnocker. Our, our township, am I pronouncing it right? I won't make that mistake again. All right. I won't make that mistake again. My apology. Vornlocker. I think the buck stops with you here.
You have to talk into the mic.
These are actual photographs that I took, just, just one of many, because we all use Randolph. I mean, it's so close. It's a, it's a connecting road to everywhere that I go. And you can see, hopefully, I, I made the pictures as large as I could, and I'm going to leave this here, that many laws are being broken here. One is an 18-wheeler on the wrong side of the road idling, cars passing on the wrong lane because it's only a two-lane road and they can't get through because we got an 18-wheeler idling. And our councilwoman, I know she's here tonight, she has taken this on, she has called Amazon, but Amazon is not listening. Let's get real. They're not listening. They can't control it. They can't control it. Well, no, I take that back. They can control it, but they won't. And my point to you is that you set this mess in motion, please. So you're going to have to control it, Mr. Vornlocker.
I, I don't know.
Not tomorrow, but as soon as possible.
I don't know how I set this mess in motion, but what I can tell you is that the police department has met with Amazon management about addressing those concerns about trucks parked there. There is more than Amazon there. There is more than Amazon on Randolph Road. Randolph Road is a commercial property and gets, and all of those businesses, including House Foods and the other warehouses, get deliveries.
Well, we can spread the blame around. We'll split, we'll spread the blame around, but the fact remains that it has become a very, very dangerous place to drive. And that is a main thoroughfare for the people, how many thousands of people, taxpayers, have to use that road Randolph? And I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine what it's going to look like if this god-awful mess happens over in Mettler's and Schoolhouse. Can you? Okay, enough said about that because I'm going to follow up with Mr. Vornlocker. And I, and I call the police. Oh, get this one. I didn't get a picture of it. I have pictures for you, for you, okay? An 18-wheeler, I don't know if it was, belonged to Amazon or the food place or whatever, parked in the lane in the wrong direction, idling. Wrong direction, idling, taking up one lane, and the rest of us are trying to figure out how in the heck to navigate Randolph. This is real. This is really happening. It happens every day. And I don't want to say much more about it because I have some other important things that I would like to briefly mention at least, but...
You have 40 seconds.
Well, I was going to beg for forgiveness and try to get another minute.
And yet they will fall on deaf ears.
All right, okay, all right. Just to clarify, the meeting that was so insulting to us, Mr. Orsini was chairing the meeting, and we go to so many of the meetings now, you'll have to forgive us. We can't recall if it was planning or zoning, but we're thinking it was planning.
It's planning if Mr. Orsini was there.
Okay, all right. So we got that cleared up. I received an email from the Sierra Club.
Sorry, that's your time.
What about the...
I'm sorry.
...exchange with the manager?
That counts in your time. If you ask a question.
Okay, it'll keep, it'll keep for the next meeting.
Hi, I'm Jan Brant, and I live at 22 Bryant Court in Canal Walk in Somerset. And I'm new to the area. I moved to New Jersey from Maryland in April 2021. I have something in common with the mayor. He moved from Maryland, too. And I was just visiting yesterday and drove back today, came to the meeting. I didn't want to miss this. And I must say, no trucks around in Maryland as much as there are in New Jersey. And, and with trucks, you know, they build separate highways for trucks, and there's a reason why they do that is because it's really dangerous when people, especially two-way streets like we have in Somerset, when people are on the road and trucks are on the road, and, and that's why there's separate highways for that. But it seems like in the, in the past year, huge warehouses that measure six football fields are just popping up all over Somerset. And so I did my research to just find out what must have happened, like in the last couple of years, that all of a sudden, all these massive warehouses are, are building up. And so what my research led me to was a meeting on December 8th, 2020. The Township Council members passed an ordinance that was, made a lot of changes, and this is why there's lots and lots of warehouses popping up. If you can't recall what was happening December 8th, 2020 in New Jersey, there was, December 7th, there was the highest amount of COVID cases in New Jersey, over 6,000 cases. December 8th was the second highest amount of COVID cases. Hospitals were packed. You couldn't get a hospital bed, and there were 17,000 deaths in New Jersey thus far. And that day, you all, December 8th, you had a Zoom meeting, and I watched it online. So it was very interesting. You passed this ordinance, and two council people asked, are these going to affect the residents in New Jersey? And the answer was, no, no, we're just combining the ordinance. So there's one... And the answer was, no, no, we're just combining the ordinance, so there's one set of rules, and that's all, you don't have to worry, there's not going to be any changes. And we want to occupy empty buildings. But let me tell you what those changes were that weren't said on that meeting via Zoom. And this is from, I'm reading from ordinances here. You have, it used to be that no warehouse building shall be higher than one story, in any event, no warehouse building shall be higher than 30 feet, lot coverage shall not exceed 40 percent. Warehouses used to have to be on five acres, now it changed to two acres, impervious, you know, and it just, now we have warehouses, six football fields. That wasn't happening before December 8th, 2020. It's really a shame. And I also got the list of people that were notified for that meeting. There's only two people that showed up on Zoom on that meeting that day. Did you all wonder what was wrong, why only two people showed up when you're making these massive changes? And one person showed up and he said, like, I'm a builder and I just got this last week, and I'm just wondering how does this affect me? And the other person called up and had no clue what it even meant. But that's all the people that showed up on that Zoom meeting. It's really a shame. And I went, I got the list of people that, from Canal Walk, that should have gotten letters, they said they didn't get any letters. And also, you got to think about some of the people, if they did get letters, would have been sent to Lake Florida. You get a week to notify people that all these changes, that warehouses now are going to be six football fields on two acres instead of one story on five acres. I mean, it's ridiculous. How could you change an ordinance that would affect the lives of all the residents of Franklin Township during what was happening December 8th, 2020? I mean, do you think people were thinking about coming and getting on Zoom and arguing? They're having family members dying. People are in the hospital. In fact, the house that I bought, two people had died of COVID in that house in September, all right? The council doesn't have a pulse of what's happening in this township. Since that change, the township hasn't been able to tell us how many warehouses, how many empty buildings. You said that, you did that ordinance, so you'd fill out empty buildings. No, buildings are being planned on now wetlands and free land. It's not true. You really misled the public. Residents of the Franklin Township deserve better. They deserve to be in a safe place. Warehouses affect all aspects of our lives, our well-being. I can't believe it's being built next to a school, a warehouse, six football fields. I'm a retired school nurse. I hope there's a school nurse in that building because the cases of asthma, and I hope those people over there that do the 911 calls, because people, kids are going to get sick. This is just not fair, what you all are doing. I recommend a moratorium. Other places in New Jersey have done it, on warehouses, until the township gets a pulse on what's going on here. I mean, you guys have no clue. We have asked, at meetings, we have asked you all, how many warehouses have you built? Oh, I don't know. How many warehouses and empty buildings? Oh, I don't know. We never get an answer. It's just not right, what's happening here. Just like you were able to change that ordinance, December 8th, 2020, that to make it all different so that all these ordinances were combined, you could change what's going on now.
Jim Johnston, 34 Norwich Place. I just wanted to say that I agree with the previous, one of the previous speakers about what transpired at that planning board meeting last week. It's on the Franklin Township YouTube channel, everyone should go look at that. August 3rd, the planning board meeting, I wasn't there, but I watched it on YouTube. I could not believe what I was seeing. I still can't believe it. You know, I think the problem is that, like she said, the members of the planning board, they're not elected officials, they are appointed bureaucrats. And I think they view their planning board as their own personal kingdom, that they can do anything they want, and they don't care what the public wants. They just want to do their own thing, and members of the public come out here and talk, and they talk down to us in a very condescending manner. It's unbelievable. So please, please have a talk, please have a talk with them, to tell them that we do not work for them, they work for us. Someone should tell them that, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor, seeing no one else coming. Well, there is some coming.
Ann Cohen, 66 Bayard Road in Canal Walk. And by the way, I was the first person that was spoken to in a manner that I don't let my enemies speak to me. Nobody speaks to me with that kind of disrespect as I was spoken to last week. I have every right to my two minutes or five minutes or whatever it is, because I would give you the same respect. So I just wanted to tell you that was very, very uncomfortable. Over the last three months, Amazon has canceled plans for nearly 10 million square foot of warehouse space. A space glut is costing on the heels of the pandemic. Now, I do understand that part of the reason why all these warehouses may be springing up is because people couldn't go out and everyone started ordering online. Well, you know something? That's not going to continue forever, especially from a place like ours, which has a lot of people that are willing, at this point, to go into stores and buy because of all of this. And I think that there, it has been all kinds of articles written and things on the news and on the TV where people are just not wanting this to happen and not wanting this to continue. I know it's business, I know there's revenue involved, I know that there's a lot more than just hurt feelings and fear, but we pay to live here. We pay to live here. We worked hard to be in this position at this stage of our lives, and quite frankly, we don't want to die from living in Franklin Township.
Mayor, seeing, I believe, no one else looking to come forward, all motion at this time to close the public portion.
Second. Moved in second. And all in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying nay. Public portion is closed. We have, we're going back on the agenda to the proclamation. Councilman Oni Jaka.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. On behalf of African and West African community in Franklin, on behalf of West African and African community in Franklin, we wish you happy birthday. On behalf of Franklin Township, our mayor, Omo Wale.
Yes, we gave you the title.
Yes, ordained by Oni of Ife.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, and the entire council will welcome you all, especially the Aba Aderemi. You are welcome. Township, briefly. Franklin Township is one of the best places to live in New Jersey. Living in Franklin Township offers the residents the dense feeling of togetherness, feeling at home, regardless of where you come from, because of its diversity. You can see from Nigeria, I'm part of Franklin Council. Before I move forward, I have some dignities that I hear in Franklin to receive you. I have Alamede, Dr., Honorable Alamede from Newark. He's a commissioner in Newark, is a good advocate of West African community, and he has been very, very useful to the community. Welcome you to him. Omo Abadi Prince, Omo Abadi Prince, Daniel Akaidi, represents the Nigerian community in Franklin, he's here with us. And my wife is here. Wife is here, and I have Chief, you are here to recognize you. And I have Dr. Godwin Babes, Omo Lala, was a member of the planning board, and is a very supportive, is very supportive of African. So we don't have much time. We'll move forward. Alamede, who will do proper introduction of this king. While Omo Abadi will finish off.
Honorable Mayor, thanks for having us. Council members, all protocol observed, the city of Franklin, thanks for having us here. My name is Honorable Alamede Davis Talabi. I'm a taxi commissioner in the city of Newark, originally from Nigeria, and I'm happy to be here in Franklin. You all are beautiful people, so thank you for having us. It's an honor to receive his royal highness. We received him today at the city of Newark, and it's also good to have him here tonight to be received in the city of Franklin. Two years ago, we received Oni of Ife in Newark, and we brought him to Franklin. Franklin is our second home, so thank you for having us. His Royal Highness, Dr. Ambassador, Olusegun Aderemi, JP, is a great achiever, a philanthropist, a caring father, a loving and doting husband, an aspirate builder and motivator, an employer of labor, but most importantly, is the king of Atayor of Arumoko Kingdom in Nekiti, Nigeria. We are honored to have you here, to recognize you for all the awesome things you're doing, for being a father figure to many Nigerians, both in Nigeria and those in the diaspora, and we just say thank you so much. Thank you.
The king, you can come here now and see you all. I'll give you the key. It honor, part of us here now. Half of Franklin Township. Thank you. I will call in, Omo Abadi. Good evening, everybody. Before I make a switch, I want to give the king maybe two minutes to just say something and greet our mayor and the township.
The Honorable Mayor, all members of the council, and the township of Franklin, you all are great people. It's me great joy and honor to be here today and to accept all the wonderful honors that you've given me today, most especially the key township of Franklin. This is to confirm the fact that Franklin is the second home of Odudua, which is the progenitor of all the Yoruba race in Africa. We believe we are from every part of the world, with our source in Ilife. My representative of Odudua, which is the Oni of Ife, has been here two years ago, and the good Lord, and probably destiny, has made it for me to be here also, to receive the same honor. We appreciate this. On behalf of the entire people of Yoruba race, in the entire Africa, and Nigeria especially, we say thank you for this. And I assure you that we're not going to take it for granted. This is our second home, count us as part of you, anytime, we always come here. Mayor, today being your birthday, and you're doing this great honor again, I will take this back home, and I'm very sure the entire Yoruba race will appreciate it. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, the Royal Highness, Olusegun Aderemi, the Atayor of Arumoko Kingdom of Nigeria. On behalf of the West African community in the township of Franklin, especially the Nigeria sector, I want to thank everyone, especially our mayor, for giving us the opportunities to welcome our king from Nigeria into the township, and for giving him a key to the township. We appreciate you, and we also appreciate the council members for granting us, for giving us this opportunity also. Thanks to everybody in this town. We have been part of this town for a very long time, have lived almost 26 years in this town, and so many of us, we have also lived here, most of our kids went to school in Franklin Township, and everybody's doing very well. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here, to be part of the American society. We are grateful. So on behalf of every one of us, I want to say thank you. Thanks to everybody for welcoming us to the township.
Your Majesty, thank you very much for honoring us with your presence, for caring enough about Franklin to come to visit. You have many subjects here, and they are fruitful citizens of our town that add to the richness and diversity of our town. Thank you for coming, you honor us with your presence.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Babes Omo Lala. If there's anyone in Franklin Township that doesn't recognize that we have a great mayor, that person should rethink again. Mayor Kramer made it possible for we, Nigerians, to excel, participate in community development. I was a member of the planning committee, and I know the contribution that we made to make sure that the community of, every segment of the community is welcome. He made it possible, and no doubt, we will continue to be champion as a Nigerian. In fact, we gave him a name. What's his name again? That means a son that came from abroad, that's the name we gave him. So thank you, Mayor, from this audience, and also all the council members. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, so the king wants to give you a title, a chief title.
The council members and all the good people of Franklin, I'm happy, and I want to... to use this opportunity to pronounce chief township title for our honorable Mayor, and that title is Obani. So from today, if you are addressing him, you have to put chief before his name. Obani means he that has made the King proud. That is Obani. Please, we'll continue to say this so that you can all understand it. Can you all say Obani? Obani. Obani, and so shall it be.
I think it means he will not take off his mask. Thank you very much. Yes. Captain Doctor. Deputy Mayor ask for a point of personal preference.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge both to the public that has joined us and the public that is watching us, as well as my colleagues and who apologize. I have a bit of a drive ahead of me down to South Jersey. Despite being relatively young, I am increasingly getting weary of driving at night long distances, so I will unfortunately have to take my leave, and I will not be able to support or be able to vote in support of the ordinances. But I think it was well worth it just to hear everything that the public shared with us today. Thank you for your vulnerability, and thank you for your assertiveness. I'll have a lot to think about whilst a couple hours' drive, but I did want to acknowledge that and give my sincere apologies for that, so. Gonna go to the bathroom, get on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to Council comments. Let's start with Councilmember Pitasnik. We have a lot of, let me remind everyone, we have a long meeting in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have very much, but I did want to say that earlier today, I had a really nice opportunity to be with Senators Menendez and Booker, with the Inflation Reduction Act having passed the Senate this past Sunday, which is going to be much-needed relief in a whole bunch of areas, in particular in the healthcare area and for our seniors, total cap of up to $2,000 on prescription drug costs, insulin capped for Medicare recipients at $35, and then in the clean energy space, the largest investment ever in combating climate change of $370 million, with $60 million, a billion dedicated to environmental justice communities. So, has to pass the House still, but it was really nice to see that great, strong leadership from our leaders in the New Jersey, that represent New Jersey in the Senate for Congress. And folks already talked about the energy aggregation that's on the agenda, and I know Council's familiar with that, and the Keysbe resolution that was passed by the Environmental Commission, which I'm the liaison to, was already addressed as well, which I'm supportive of. And there was one gentleman that talked about marijuana. I believe I have this right, someone could correct me, but when we're approving these 20 different sites, I don't want folks to think that they're going to build or locate all of those sites. That just is part of their application, and the state has a very limited number of licenses that it's going to give, and I guarantee you they're not all going to come to Franklin, but you know, that's why that's happening. And then just one other thing that came to mind, which is, it always surprises me, the idea that you can't drink until you're 21, when you can die for your country at 18. So, you know, somewhere in between, we make these laws, but they don't always make sense, and it struck me, I know marijuana is new for a lot of folks, alcohol's been around for a long time, but we need to stay vigilant too around what people's rights are, and you know, if you're willing to stand up and give your life for our freedom and not be able to partake in certain aspects of it, it's sort of shocking to me. So, I know it all comes from a good place, and we're in this all together, but I don't think you have to worry about all 20 or all of them popping up in the town at this point. So, and that's all my comments for this evening, and I appreciate seeing everyone.
Thank you, Councilmen. Councilman Embarrassan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say to the group from Canal Walk, by the way, I live in Renaissance, so I'm 55-plus, as you can tell, I'm the oldest member. After Ted Chase left the Council, I became the oldest member of the Council. Anyway, I'm also a Planning Board Commissioner member, whatever you want to call me, I represent the Council there. I have to agree with some of the comments here. The meeting got out of hand, there was, there could have been a better exchange and better decorum in the whole meeting, but I wanted to assure you that we have taken some steps. We have spoken to some people, so we are hoping that going forward, such situation would not repeat. So, I just want to tell you, so the public portion of the meeting is not really meant to be an exchange between public and the applicant per se. It's really you're expressing your opinion about something, and hopefully, you know, we appreciate hearing from you, we have taken action, whatever action we could, as soon as we heard some of the concerns, the Council acted on the new ordinance and so on. So you are respected, your voices are heard. To the extent that we can act, we will. Anyway, so beyond that, I have a number of other things that I wanted to report on, Mayor. Human Relations Commission had a meeting on July 27th. School Superintendent Janavali and Public Relations Manager Mary Clark were the attendees. I think we had a very good discussion about the security at the school system, especially after the shooting at the Uvalde, Texas incident. Superintendent did assure us that a situation like the cops could not find the key to the classrooms to get in would not occur here. There's key available with the school resource officer, is a member of the Franklin Police Department is stationed there, has the keys, the master key to all the classrooms. So, along those lines, they are looking at other improvements to the safety and security of the kids in the high school system. So it was a very, very good discussion, and thanks to the school superintendent for coming over. The next meeting was, Human Relations Commission would be on August 24th. The Guidance Counselor Supervisor Boxdale would be the guest speaker. Further, there was a board meeting, the Suvarage Authority, on August 2nd. The Executive Director presented a proposed budget, which calls for a modest increase of sewerage rates to, I think an average household would pay about $23 more per year. So that's not significant, but it is going to be an increase, that proposal, that budget was presented in the last. Also pleased to report some new businesses that are coming into town. August 4th saw Apna Bazaar, a huge farm market kind of a grocery shop opened up on Route 27. It was a great affair. If you went to that parking lot, you couldn't find a parking spot that day. A lot of people showed up, and more and more businesses are coming to Franklin, and we are happy to welcome them. Today, I attended a solar plant inauguration at the center school, a 611 kilowatt solar plant that included rooftop solar panels as well as carports that had the solar panels. It's along the lines of what we are talking about, that's going to offset a lot of greenhouse gas emissions, carbon dioxide, and methane, and so on, so forth, as well as, I think that one of those statistics was, it's also going to, it's equivalent to 112 cars running for the whole year, it's going to offset. So that's a great thing for the township and for the environment, and that we, I'm a strong supporter of green energy and alternative forms of energy supplies to homes and commercial spaces and everything, so we promote that here. And I think we had also just attended a Public Works Committee meeting. My colleague would give more update on that, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
Since my Councilman addressed the marijuana application situation, I'm not going to be redundant. And since you addressed the situation with the Planning Board, I'm not going to be redundant. The one thing I do want to say, the Canal Walk situation, there ought to be something we can do in the interim, even though there's a supply chain shortage, to make that area safe in the meantime. We should not let that go on. We have to do something to fix it. If it's cutting down trees, if we're putting up lights, whatever we need to do to make that area safe, we got to get on that right away. There's something we can control.
You mean Canal Road.
Canal Road. What did I say?
Canal Walk.
Canal Road, I'm sorry. Canal Road. That area where the accident happened.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Lots of canals.
Yes. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Francois, because it's exactly what I was thinking, and I know our manager will do every effort in that capacity, in that aspect of things. But the public, we have a lot of roadways, and by all means, if you see that there's any, whether it's a down branch or anything, often it's trees growing, blocking any signage, please report it to our, or portal, I believe is the proper place, because we have fantastic Public Works, and we have fantastic police department, but if you see something, our manager, I know when I've sent him messages, sometimes the same day, a branch that could be blocking any kind of no left turn, whatever it is, so please, we will be happy to field that call, and I'm sure you'll get a timely response, either through the portal or through a phone call. As Councilman mentioned, we had a Public Works meeting tonight, basically covering a lot of subjects, some, a lot of them still in the works, but update on a rotary paving, which is a little behind schedule, but still everything we planned on getting done this year is getting done through bids that have been put out, or right now are out to bid. And again, it is our most aggressive year for paving, I believe, in Franklin's history. The one item that we were discussing is that as new water meters will be put in, whether it's a new construction of a home, or business, or existing water meters that are part of our program that every few decades, as deemed, you know, at the end of lifespan, a little meter that tells us how much water we use. Going forward, we'll be locating them in the right of way, usually near where the water access point is anyway. Those are read automatically, so I believe wireless readings, but for a variety of reasons which are beneficial for our water operation, we'll be having those meters in the right of way, no cost to the homeowner or business owner, as they'll be replaced as part of our ongoing replacement program. I believe that's, oh, we did get some good news, because I know we, some Council people, and I know Councilwoman Nudine had brought it forward to us with the idea of seeing if there's a way we can modify our water fountains, which I guess now is more important than ever, in our parks, because there's certain ones that can be converted to our dogs, which thankfully, we have many in Franklin, could be retrofitted so that there can be an attachment where it's easy for a dog to be given water also, especially obviously in any weather, especially the heat. But we found out fortunately that ours are the type that will only cost in the hundreds, as opposed to the thousands, so we're looking next year at perhaps adding those, and I, Councilwoman Nudine, hopefully will be happy we got that information today. Little thing, but something we're trying to do. Keep it in mind, people's pets and needs. I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nudine.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, residents. First off, I want to thank Canal Walk team for coming out here and voicing your opinion. I think it's, you know, it shows us a lot of visibility to what you guys see on day-to-day by living there versus us on the other side sometimes, so thank you for bringing in pictures and voicing your opinion and continuing to watch the roads for us and reporting bad, violating, people that are violating like trucks when they're out there, and continue to do that, because that way we can also continue to report those out and make sure that bad behaviors of people driving out and double parking or, you know, idling can stop. So thank you for continuously doing that on every meeting. I'm excited about more businesses coming to Franklin. I think it's nice to see some of those, I'm going to say blank, plazas that are out there that are getting full now. So please do go out there, shop local, support local businesses, we need them in town, right? So, as things are opening up, as you can see, there's another one opening up later this week, make sure you guys get out there and support them. So, I also, Council members, I also have to excuse myself, I have a personal situation, so I have to step out, but before I do that, I wanted to take the remainder of my time and wish our Mayor a very happy birthday, it's his birthday, well, it was yesterday, I believe, right, Mayor? So, happy birthday, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
I no longer celebrate them until they come along. Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you very much. Councilman Carl Ray.
Mayor, we'll be real quick with this. Week of the People, August the 13th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Neiman Williams Park at 42 Matilda Avenue. Backpack giveaways, games, vendors, entertainment, Wolf Wall to bring the young ones out and have a good time. We also, same organization, Week of the People, on the 14th of August, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. we'll have inspirational, have an inspirational festival at Bascom Park at 7, excuse me, at 178 the Monaco Avenue. We want you to come out for that, that's one of our little parks out there. And then on the 20th, it's a music festival from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Harvey Edman Park at 290 Loop Lane. Now, website is weekofthepeople.org, so it's one word, weekofthepeople.org for further information. Go there and get information. Second, Sister to Sister, that's sisternumber2sister.org. A 5K1 Walk for Life, October the 1st, 2020, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. I want to give you the website, and that's sister2sisternumber2sister.org, and there you'll receive all the information you need to sign up, give donations, collect money, and help out the screening process. You have a cancer screening process on Thursday, August 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You will have an empowerment speaker, Jacqueline Jackson, and exercise speaker, Debbie Davis. This will all take place at 1201 Hamilton Street. Again, 1201 Hamilton Street, here in Franklin Township. And I want to say, the men in this room and the men in this township ought to help our women make that screening, because they are the ones that bear the fruit of this society, of this world. They are the women that handle business, and we need to make sure we help them take care of business. So I definitely want the men out here to make sure they take the women for that cancer screening. Also, join the New Jersey Citizen Action Program. They have a weekly free homebuyers program. And I want to say, 30 years ago, I went to one, and they gave me everything I wanted, what credit meant, how much money you needed for a down payment, everything that you needed to know to buy a house. And it just so happened my father-in-law bought my house, but that's a good deal. But I'm going to give you that website, and that's NJCAEF.org. Again, NJCAEF.org. If you're looking to do a house, that's where you want to go. Now, the last thing I want to come up with is my annual law enforcement info session. I was talking to our township manager today about that, and we want to have it here in the council chambers tentatively on September 24th, Thursday. 22nd, that Thursday?
Yeah, I believe I did.
Okay. So it'll be September the 22nd, and we're looking to tie that down. So I advise you to go to the website just to make sure. And we'll be here in the council chambers. We will have our public safety director and the sheriff in Somerset County, and other law enforcement personnel that Ms. Maygul thinks that we need to answer the questions of the residents here in Franklin Township. So we need you to come out, bring all your questions, bring your neighbors, come down and ask the questions that you need asked, you want answers to. And if you don't come down and ask those questions, then you're lost, because you're going to call Mr. Bornlocker, you're going to burn his telephone up and ask him for that information, or you're going to call Ms. Marie or Master Clerk and burn her phone up, ask him for directions. So I'm going to advise you to come. It is worthwhile to come to this session. Yours truly will be there, and we'll see how it goes. Again, this is our second annual law enforcement get-together info session. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Now for my comments. I guess for the next at least two days, if possibly third day, I will be at Randolph Road between sometime between 7:30 and 8:30, so I can see what's going on there. I've driven it many times at various times of the day, and when I drive it, I've, total of five or six times, I think I've seen a total of one truck. But I don't know that I've been there at that time, so I will go there at that time and I will look. And my bet is if manager is hearing that I'm doing that, he'll probably do it too.
Well, Mr. Manager, I've been doing it for about the last six months. It's about half a mile from my house. It's my route home, it's my route to work. I shop at ShopRite, that's my grocery store. My dry cleaner is at the corner of Elizabethan Schoolhouse. And that is a two or three time a week drop-off and pickup. My pharmacy is CVS, so I'm in that area often. And like I said, I live an hour and a half away. So I will just continue to do what I've been doing for a number of months before this matter came to light.
An hour and a half? You mean, I think, a mile and a half?
I said, I live about a half a mile away from Canal Walk.
But you said you live an hour and a half.
No, I live a half a mile away from Canal Walk.
Okay.
And have, no, not an hour and a half. I said, I live a half a mile away.
Okay. And I will be watching the August 3rd Planning Board meeting, the public session, and I will speak to whoever is appropriate to speak to after I see it for myself. I, I hope you're exaggerating. I'm not saying you are. I hope you're exaggerating. I'm seeing heads shake now. So I'm saddened by that. I was just made a chief. I wish I were made emperor. If I were made emperor, then the benign warehouse would go away. But I'm not emperor. It's, you know, you're not going to want to hear this, but it's, it's America, and I can't stop that. We are working hard to modify it and minimize it. I wish I could make it go away, but I'm not going to lie to you, I can't make it go away. This body can't, we, I mean, I can talk to this guy and find out other things we could do, but we would be doing them at, at your peril, and it may not make any difference. But I will, I will continue, as I have, to look and have staff look for ways that we can minimize this and possibly make it go away. We will try, but I, you know, the law is the law, and we have to follow the law. It's not, it's not our law to change, it's the state law. It's also this thing in the Constitution, the Fifth Amendment. The Fifth Amendment, well, you can put your hand to your head, but the Fifth Amendment basically says you cannot take land. You cannot take property. Ma'am, I'm not going to have a discussion with you. You cannot take property from people without just, without paying them back. So we're, this is how we are limited? Again, if I were emperor, I would make it go away, but I'm not emperor. Mr. Manager, your comments.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll get to the nuts and bolts of government again. And as much as we all don't like them, property tax bills are due to be mailed. They are late, they are late due to the fact that the state of New Jersey was slow to certify tax rates in the state, and many towns are now mailing out their tax bills for the third and fourth quarters of 2022 and the first two quarters of 2023. Those tax bills will be mailed by the 10th, with the grace period for payment of taxes extended to September 6th. If you wish to pay your taxes online, you can do so now. And all tax information regarding the 2022-2023 tax bills is available on the township website. Today, the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection, in conjunction with our governor, declared there to be a statewide drought watch. All residents are asked to conserve water. Previously, New Jersey American Water, in five or six counties that they provide water, we are a large bulk purchaser from New Jersey American Water for the water utility of the township. They were put on odd-even water days. That, that has not been altered at this point. However, I know a number of you live in homes that have sprinkler systems. If you have a sprinkler system and you don't need to water your grass, I think that at this point, given the current drought situation in the state, you would be encouraged not to do so. We have an ordinance that does, once the, the level goes higher from just a drought watch to a drought warning, there are certain restrictions that kick in once that happens per our township ordinance. If you, if you'd like to read that, it's on the township website under the code. If you have sprinkler systems, it talks about ones that have rain gauges and coming on during certain times of the, of the day. If, if you do water your grass, don't water it in the heat of the day, because that's a total waste. You know, your grass and plants and flowers should be watered early in the morning or late in, and grass not late in the evening, but early in the morning, so that mold doesn't develop. So that's the drought issue and the tax bill issue. And that seems like this point in the night, what I needed to report, Mr. Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you. There are no council discussion items.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, you know, often I don't do this, it's just one thing I forgot to mention, if I could.
Go ahead.
Okay? Thank you. And I know they're not here anymore, and I know this isn't the biggest issue for most of people remaining, but I just wanted to acknowledge East Millstone Rescue Squad. Seventy-five years to be able to keep an organization running and alive and being the, one of the council liaisons to the group, that, that committee that's involved with the rescue squads in town, I, just knowing what they go through to keep their numbers up and keep their volunteers. And yes, Robert Wood Johnson handles the majority of calls in this town. But in my opinion, them, and we have a couple other squads, but today is their day for 75 years, they're God-sent. And I'm just really glad that they're here. I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to have to motion to change the order of the items to do CDBG. Now we have personnel waiting, so not keep her any longer. Do I have a motion to do item number 12 now?
Motion to amend.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So we're skipping down to item number 12, Community Development Block Action Plan. You want to have the public session first, or you want to? So, so we are required to have an open, a public hearing. This, the public hearing is specifically on community development block grant, it is not a general public hearing. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on the CDBG Annual Action Plan only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the mic.
Seeing no one come forward, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we close public session.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public session on CDBG is closed. So are you looking to speak? Hold the mic to you? Sure.
The Township of Franklin receives money from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually to assist in providing services to low and moderate income residents of Franklin Township, the majority of whom reside in the East Franklin portion of the Township. This year, the Township was awarded $312,761 for activities that would assist those residents. And we received 10 funding applications from various nonprofits in the community to provide those services. The Lena and David T. Walens Community, Senior Housing Center is recommended to receive $44,059 for kitchen upgrades and bathroom upgrades. The Center for Great Expectations, $14,288 to install flooring at their transitional housing facility. The Sisters Network of Central New Jersey Tree Removal and Site Revitalization, $10,000. Franklin Township Food Bank, installation of an air curtain and electrical upgrades, Middle Earth, $4,350 for youth readiness. Home sharing, $10,000 for homeless match services. Central Jersey Housing Resource Center, $6,314. Great Expectations, again, Katie's Place Child Care Program, $20,000. Franklin Food Bank for their community farm, $1,500. And Sister to Sister Social Service Program, $4,750. From the public notice period, we had originally considered putting $58,000 in our housing rehabilitation program. However, there is an urgent need over in the East Franklin area to do some sidewalk improvements in the CDBG target area. So those funds are recommended to be moved, creating a pool of $111,948 for sidewalks in the East Franklin area. And we will also be reprogramming an additional $26,000 for the sidewalks as well, from CBD years 2018 and 2019 for unfinished projects. That is the, the summary of the funding applications that we will be sending to her tomorrow. And if you have any questions, I'll take them. Okay? All right. Thank you, and thank you for your approval.
So Resolution 22321 approving the filing of the FY 2022 Community Development Block Action Plan, sent to council. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion or questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Abstained.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
We will now go back on the agenda to approval of the minutes, number 10. I have a number of minutes here. I present the following minutes to Township Council for approval. Bear with me. Executive Session, March 8th. All of these are 2022. Work Session, Regular Meeting, March 22nd. Work Session, Regular Meeting, and Executive Session, May 24th. Work Session and Regular Meeting, June 14th. Special Meeting, June 20th. Work Session, Regular Meeting, June 28th. Special Meeting, July 6th. Work Session, Regular Meeting, July 12th. Special Meeting, July 19th. Anyone have any corrections? Motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion on the minutes? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes, for A through I. Abstained for J.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Move to the warrants in the amount of $26,427,788.83 on August 9th, are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the, on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone want to pull an item or question an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
We will now skip down to item number 14, ordinances on introduction. I'm going to skip to 13, public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading. First reading is when we announce to the world that we are considering an ordinance. Second reading is when we actually pass it or don't pass it, and there's a public hearing with a second reading. So we do have an item on second reading, ordinance 437222, an ordinance amending the Code of the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 226-30, handicapped parking, add 28 Roberts Road is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're open to the public on this ordinance only.
Mayor, seeing no one coming forward to speak on this ordinance, on motion, we close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is closed. Do we have a? Do we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
So now we're on to first readings. Ordinance number 4374-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 260 Parks and Recreation, Article 2, Parks Rules and Regulations, Section 260-6, Prohibited Activities. Foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, publication in accordance with law, and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council will be held on September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. That's September 13th, 7:00 p.m. right here. Do we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So Democratic Party a few months ago, or actually a year ago, had a rally in the park, and I read the rules about it, and it actually said, no rallies in the park, no public speaking in the park. It was written in the '60s and completely ignored the First Amendment. So I went about discussing this with several people, and we basically amended that ordinance in accordance with the First Amendment. Any other discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4375-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly new Chapter 235 Municipal Gazeebo. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading and posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council will be held on September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this basically sets the rules for the use of the gazebo, such as no political rallies at the gazebo on primary day and on election day, and also sets the fees for renting the gazebo. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I had a question. I read it. I don't have it in front of me. The only thing, and this is a little bit of a technical issue, it says something about you're able to attach or hang banners or signs, and I'm not, I'm for that. I'm not suggesting we should impede that, right. But it wasn't really clear, and I just didn't want groups to be like nailing or screwing in things, and I didn't know if there was any practical aspect of making sure that they were instructed before, you know, anything would be accidentally, you know, damaged or altered. So again, I'm all in favor of this, but I just, is there any plan relevant to that or any language that maybe should be added?
Part of the permit process, Councilman, and they're only allowed to temporarily fix it to the building while they have a permit for the use of the gazebo.
Okay, so there'll be no confusion, any group would, no?
It's part of the permit application. It will say it on the application.
Okay, so explain there. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Beautiful gazebo, and I support this.
They have to put a $300 refundable deposit for?
I saw that also, but of course, trying to avoid anybody losing a deposit. Okay, thank you, manager. I didn't, never applied for a permit for that, so I didn't know. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
An ordinance number 4376-22, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 50, Police Department, Section 50-7, Ranking Officers, applicable regulations, Sections 50-11, Promotion to Sergeant and Lieutenant, and Section 50-12, Promotion to Captain, the foregoing ordinance. This is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council will be held on September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this really is just a cleaning up of language in our regulations, part of language that needs to be changed because we used to have a police chief, now we have a public safety director. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4377-22, an ordinance to amend the municipal code, Chapter 226 Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Code, Section 226-10, Stopping or Standing Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets, adding Metler's Road. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council will be held on September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. So we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and I think it's pretty straightforward. There'll be no standing or stopping on Metler Road. Part of our traffic control in the area. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance number 4378-22, an ordinance to the Township Council, Frank, Township of Franklin, Somerset County, State of New Jersey, granting a sump pump easement to Fanner Fernandez Nunes for the purpose of constructing a sump pump discharge pipe to an existing inlet for 16 Woodward Road, also known as Block 380, Lot 13 of, on the tax map of Franklin Township, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council on September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. There's an extra O, or there's an O in map of Franklin? Thank you. Do we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is to, you are a local problem of a sump pump discharge. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4379-22, an ordinance to the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, authorizing a referendum on the establishment of a community energy aggregation program. Foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Do we have a motion on the item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So energy aggregation is where a town gets together and with that, that large numbers has the bargaining power to go out to bid to see if they can get reduced energy costs and clean energy agreements with whoever's supplying power to the town. This, if it were to go into, and what the plan here is, is to send us out to referendum. If it were to pass council and then pass referendum, the idea would be that we would only accept it if there's a 5% savings better than PSC and G, that there's a 10% greater renewable energy or clean energy allegation than 10% greater than what is required by the state, so which for now would be about 34%. And there will also be an option for people to, at additional cost, go, request 100% renewable energy instead of the 34% that would be required to, in any bid specification that we received. So are there any other discussion item? Any other discussion on this item?
Just don't see you in here anywhere where it says 30.
What it says is 10% greater than the state. What's the wording?
Renewable portfolio standard.
Councilwoman, and the state has a energy master plan in which they, it targets as to one there. So we're just fixing it to the state.
What the 10% means?
Which is, right, which is currently 24%, so that makes the 34%.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion items? Mr. Attorney, there was a question about that, the 100%, that it wasn't clear that the 100% would not be required to save 5% in savings. So if it's 100% renewable, is that going to be required to be at a 5% savings over PSC?
No, so the way it works is that the adopted, you'll go out to bid for whatever the aggregation contract is. Presumably, you'll get a bid that is more than a 5% saving. That bid will have to have an option for people to 100% clean energy. So the answer is that those two things are not, they're mutually exclusive.
Okay. Any other discussion or question?
I just want to thank the committee that put forth the petition for working together with the council to come up with a really aggressive, appropriate question for the public to respond to, and we hope they'll be supportive as we are tonight.
So if this passes, we'll get cheaper energy and cleaner energy. And any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Thank you. It passes. So I can't see it from here, but if you would be good enough to sign that document, then you will not have the county clerk pulling his hair out, wondering what he's going to do with two ordinances. All right, we are now on to the consent agenda. Items A through AE is listed on the consent agenda portion of the meeting represented Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Have a second.
I'll second it, Ed.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone want to pull an item or discuss an item?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick, for the township manager, 22305 Authorization Contract for Services, the Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Low Income Household Water Assistance Program.
So there was a program that's being funded by the American Rescue Plan to supplement those people who meet certain income requirements that were not able to pay their water bill during the pandemic and accumulated arrears for their water bill. There was a number of people who applied to receive funding from the state, which is passed through from the American Rescue Plan for up to $1,500 in assistance on their arrears for their water bill, and this will allow us to enter into that agreement with the state of New Jersey so that they can apply those funds to some of our customers who are not able to pay their water bills and meet the income requirements.
I just wanted to say that was an excellent program, and I'm glad you brought it to us. Everybody can use a hand sometime. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Enbarison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
And we have no resolutions to be voted on separately. Item number 17, boards, commissions, committees, do we have any nominations?
Mayor, I have one.
Yes.
So the chairman of the Human Resources Commission has asked us to approve nominating Damanti Chivakula to be a commissioner in HR. I nominate her to be a commissioner.
Any other nominations for the same position? Any other nominations? There's only one nomination. We can do it by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations to Viante. We have no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.
Good night.